Raise your hand. I assume we're being filmed, is that right? The Habit of Grace Planning Commission meeting of June 26, 2025 will now come to order. I'll first call the roll. Ed Girono.
Present.
Warren Hartenstein is not here. Farhat Shah is not here, and she told us earlier that she could not make the meeting because of a work obligation. Chip Place.
Here.
Janice Chan.
Here.
Mary Miller.
Here.
And Chair Volney Ford is here. Okay, we have five present, and we have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is the comments by citizens on agenda items, and there are no citizens here, so we'll go to the next item. Old business, which we've been carrying over month by month, and that is adoption of proposed rules and procedures for the Planning Commission. And we have some action for that old business tonight. I'm gonna pass out a draft number two of Habit of Grace Planning Commission Rules of Operation and Procedure. And the city attorney has, who is present, has gone through that document, and let me pass these down to you all. And worked on it for us from a, more from a legal perspective. Anybody else wanna copy now? I think that we probably, since we're looking at this for the first time, it was just given to me tonight. I think the best thing to do with this is for us to not try to wade through this thing tonight until we can go home and digest all of the things that she is proposing in, in, in the draft. And she's, for convenience, she's numbered the left margin, so that when we do tackle this thing, which will be hopefully at the very next meeting, that we can refer to line by line by the, by the line numbers, which is kind of the same way legislation works. And it'll be a lot easier. So in considering this document, I wanna share a couple of things with you. Number one, one of the, one of the things that I think most of us had hoped that we could eliminate the position of
Alternate.
Alternate Commissioner. And I understand that the city council is not interested in doing that, you know, they, they haven't, they've just taken the position that they would prefer the alternate position stay in place. So that's fine, you know, that's, it's their call. And the second thing that I had hoped would, would be that there would be some mention in the newest, newest Planning Commission ordinance. Some mention of the city council liaison member and their role with the Planning Commission. And I only felt that way because that is specified in every other commission or committee that's in the city ordinances. There is mention of council liaison, and it slight, it describes their role slightly differently one to the next. But I don't believe in any other committee or commission are they a, I may be mistaken, but I don't think that they're a voting member, I think they are what you might call a participating member. But be that as it may, the two commissions that, that are have to do some serious voting that is referred to in state law are the Board of Appeals and the Planning Commission. And, and, and certainly now that the ordinances have changed, the Planning Commission, the council member is no longer a voting member of the Planning Commission, and never was a voting member of, of the Board of Appeals. You know, they were there, but they, they couldn't sit kind of as judge and jury in a, in an appeals case. So they just had to sit and observe. So if that is satisfactory with everyone, we take this home and give it serious consideration. And particularly with, in, in light of a lot of the hearings that we've had lately, and I say lately, within the last year, where there've been different concerns brought up and so forth, and, and perhaps even different takes on, on what the role of the Planning Commission is. I want you to seriously consider that as well. And if, Jeff, if we could, if we could, unless we've got a packed public hearing agenda, if we can get this on the very next agenda, I would appreciate it, where we can really dig into this thing. So I would, yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
All right, and maybe you guys can fill me in on this. So, a long, long time ago, when I started here, we didn't have a council member. And then, we had a council member. And Mike Hitchens voted, Jim Ringsocker voted, and Tammy Shenegas voted. When, when and what changed it that they no longer become voting members? And I'm just, cuz I, I totally missed.
Because the ordinance, before the ordinance was just changed.
So it changed ordinance.
Yeah, it's very specifically excluded, the council liaison as a voting member. The ordinances that stood before that for a long time, the council liaison was a sitting member of the Planning Commission, in the ordinance.
Okay.
All right.
That was just within the past year, right?
The change?
Yeah.
Just in the past few months.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, in fact, this spring.
And that was prompted to align with other commissions and Habit of Grace?
Well, I'm sure there were more reasons than that. Yes.
It was actually requests made by council member Shenegas herself. So she requested to not be a voting member of the Planning Commission. State law, the state land use code allows a sitting council member to be a voting member of the Planning Commission, but it's not a requirement. So the local body can decide, the local state, the local legislature, the city council gets to decide whether they wanna have a council member as a voting member of the commission or not. So she had made the request for that to be changed, and then the council put it on the agenda and voted in favor of that. So in order to change it back, it would require a change in the city code to put that back in.
Oh, I know, I didn't think it was broke, and I don't know why we fixed it, but I'm okay with that answer, thank you so much. All right, I'm clear.
It did, it did put a council member in a bit of a potentially tough bind to, to vote on a, a case before the commission based on good principles of planning and comprehensive plan. And yet, if they were sitting on city council and, and that same issue came before the city council, they have to think about it more from a political standpoint. And, and so it kind of potentially, and I saw in the past over the, you know, reaching way back, I saw some situations where I was pretty sure that the council liaison was, was basically speaking out of the political side of their mouth when they were talking about the case here on the dais. And, cuz that can be, there can be a difference there. You know, we, sometimes we have to take a position that may or may not be politically.
I agree.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
I mean, that's what, that's what we do, that's why we're separated from elected officials. Because we have to look at things from a different perspective sometimes. And that's pretty hard on an elected official. And if you wanna see a situation that's really hard on elected officials, is, is Harford County government, Harford County Council still the Board of Appeals? Can you imagine that?
And I think that's limited to counties, that local municipalities can't do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cuz, you know, obviously, they're making a Board of Appeals judgment with all their political antenna stuck straight out. And that's, that's kind of weird. Okay, I would entertain a motion that we, once again, postpone this to the next meeting.
I move we postpone to the next meeting, consideration of our rules of operation and procedures.
A second.
All right, any discussion on the motion, a second?
Just one point of discussion, Mr. Chairman. You know, the last, having rules is very important, in fact, we're required to have rules, and we've gone without them for a long time. I would just note that over the last couple of meetings, we've seemed to have changed some of our practices and protocols without a rulemaking process, and even without it having been vetted before the commission, which, some of which I objected to. You know, including like, we're not, not entertaining written comments from the public unless the member of the public is here. So those are the kind of things that should be discussed by the commission as a whole, and be part of a rulemaking process that the commission adopts, and not be done on an ad hoc basis.
I think, I think we would, most of us agree with that.
Okay, good. All right, and I'll, I appreciate the city attorney coming up with further amendments to these rules.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote, and if I'm, what I do with it. Too much stuff going on. Oh, lordy, 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 lordy. Bear with me, here we go. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chan?
Yes.
Mr. Place?
Yes.
Mr. Girono?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, so it carries. Okay. I'm looking at, okay, here we go. New business. The first item on the agenda is adoption of the 2024 Planning Commission Annual Report, which is required by the state. And you've all seen copies of the annual report that were, this is the way it's done every year, year after year. Staff prepares all the information, they use a format that's prescribed by the state, and they have to answer a, a ton of questions about activity in the city, and it's all technical, it's all items of record. And they compiled this for us, and I really appreciate the, the great job you did on that, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of work. And then, of course, there's the cover letter that the chair signs, and then off it goes to the state of Maryland. The reason I'm shuffling papers so much is cuz I had already printed this out, and then there was another copy laying here. The copy I had was a lot longer than this one. Are we missing?
Maybe printed on both sides.
Huh? Oh, that's what you did. Yeah, there it is, there it is, yeah, okay. Okay, you've got it laying before you, unless you've already printed it out before you came to the meeting. And that's the June 24 letter to the Office of Secretary. And it's got a place down at the bottom where I'm supposed to sign it. And I would like for any of you to ask any questions you might have of our Director of Planning, if you have a question about anything in here. But the, what I will be seeking is your approval for me to sign the letter and, and for it to be shipped off to the state.
Do you have a copy that I could have? An extra one, cuz I don't have one. I think this is what I looked at online, this was online, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, this, this was provided to us a week, a week ago.
Yeah. I've been looking through so many forms lately.
So you all should have had a chance already to go through it and read it and raise any questions that you might have.
I do have one question. And I finally figured out what it was. It was on page six, and it was adequate public facility ordinance. And it said, you, you, we have this APFO, and I understand that we do that. But one of my questions is, and it's a very frustrating thing for me, is when we have these reports, these are annual reports, I am assuming, correct, right? So when we have these reports, and then we have a development that's built, that report actually is not accurate for the next development. Do, do you follow what I'm saying? Like, the schools might be overloaded, or something else might not be enough. And I wonder if, I'm not, I'm not questioning this report at all, this is fine. But my question is, is there a way that we can get an updated report on the things that might be changing, such as the school quantity of students? I know the sewer and the waters, that's a long-term planning that they handle, and then they say, well, it's coming cuz we're, we're building, and I understand all that, the infrastructure has to be put in, I understand that. But the schools is, is a major thing, and the traffic situation is also a major thing. And those particular things, I wonder if, if there's, if there's a way that we can, every time we have a new developer come in here and wanna put in, I don't know, anywhere like a hundred more houses, should we possibly request another study for those, at least those particular two things, traffic and schools? That's my question, because I feel like I'm shooting in the dark, saying, yes, you can build, when we don't even know what the quantity of the last development has affected the traffic in the schools. Does that make sense?
Yes, and from a school standpoint, Harford County Public School System, they provide us updates twice a year, July and January. And then we do send the plans to the school, and they have a staff person that does an analysis, and they determine how many students will yield from the development, and they provide us a report saying whether or not that will exceed the 110% threshold for enrollment. So it is done twice a year in terms of an update, and then it is done project by project.
Okay, that's, that was a big thing for me that I needed to understand. The other one was the traffic situation, because our roads are such a, a thing. Go ahead.
But it's not cumulative.
I don't understand, Harry.
It's a snapshot of today. So what I'm saying is, is as of today, this is, they give that per-plan basis. So until they're built out, they can't count them. So they don't count them. So we can approve a thousand, and if none of them are built, no harm, no foul. They build all a thousand, the cumulative effect is what you're getting at.
But aren't there projections in there?
There, there are, yes.
Yes.
They go out four to five years with projections, based on what they know at the time.
Who does the projecting?
The school, planners.
There's only one planner.
Planner, sorry. We had several in Howard, Howard County, so.
So only one in Harford County?
I guess my concern is, are we shooting ourselves in the foot by agreeing to allow development when we don't really know the result of the development on the infrastructure that we've already got? For instance, I'll, I'll just tell you, when we lived in California, when they built a development, there was a school put in because that they had to have a school for the certain amount of students that were coming into the development, it was planned around that. And I'm not all over California, I'm from San Diego County, so that's what I'm referring to in particular. But when they built, they built with the plan to cover the amount of students that were probably coming in with the development if the school that was already there couldn't handle it. So I'm not sure if we're looking at our comprehensive plan, which to me was so hard-worked, we worked so hard for that, to make sure that we're not overloading our schools by allowing development to continue when we don't have that, what you just said, that we just have a snapshot versus the cumulative thing. That's my concern.
But is, is it also not Board of Education policy that a new school is not built until the students are there?
Correct, that's what I'm saying, so maybe we shouldn't let the development be built.
Well, then there would never be development.
Well, you have to, you have to allow something, that you have to have, juggle this, and you have to have the knowledge before you go and approve. So if you're gonna approve and say, we're gonna have 110% in our schools, because that's the limit, but then you have already approved, as Harry referred to, a thousand other developments, then we have to have a plan somewhere in there, and that has to, I don't know how we work with the Harford County School Districts, I don't know how we work with that.
But what is, it's just my view, but it, it seems to me that it's always comes down to a chicken or an egg
Right.
situation, and the, the public school system and the county and the state of Maryland are not gonna be interested in building any more schools if there's no more increase in population. And if we don't approve another single development, then not another single school's gonna get built. Necessarily, and, and except to replace aging schools. And so, the, the only way that you get an increase in schools is for there to be an increase in need for the schools. And so that's where the chicken and egg situation, and, and I don't know if California has a deal where the developer itself has to provide the schools.
I don't know that.
Or provide the land for the schools, or any of that, but I don't think it works that way here.
It doesn't.
And, and so, there's no way that we can force a developer, if, even if it's a huge developer, a huge development, to include in, in their schools, whereas we can require them, at least on their land and roads that are approaching their land to improve the road system, you know, that, that happens. Am I correct?
Typically, it could be private roads, could be public roads, but you know, typically, if it's public, then they do dedicate it to the city, and the city maintains it, and there's developers' agreements, responsibilities for those, yeah.
Janice, you know, with every subdivision application, the Planning Commission staff and the applicant are provide, required to provide updated public facilities ordinances. So if it's sewer and water and roads, the if it's sewer and water and roads, the Director of Public Works is required to provide verification that adequate public facilities exist. And sewer and water have been a real issue of late, so that's why we've had to get, make sure there were development agreements in place where developers are paying to, say, improve the water tower up at Glenview or whatever it's called. And similarly with schools, the developers obligated to show that they will not exceed 110% of school capacity. But the problem, you know, an issue that comes up, though, is, is the data current.
Yeah.
And that was an issue with the last application, because the school data was two years old.
Okay.
So, but those, that's why it's important to keep current that way, and that we get, you know, real-time feedback from the school district to, in terms of what the present and the most recent enrollment figures are, and then use the projections, you know, the standard projections.
I think that's, that was why I was confused, because we had a two-year-old
Right.
thing, but we're, if they're giving them every six months, then we should be getting them before each meeting, whatever the most current one was. That's, that would help tremendously in my confusion when I'm trying to decide, is this a feasible thing for our community? You know, you need to know that kind of data. The traffic situation doesn't seem like it's going to be something that's resolved with us or anybody, because it seems to me this is a state and a county issue. Am I correct? On our roads that are the disasters right now? I mean, I don't want to call them disaster. Well, they're just not, they're not efficient. Let's just put it that way. I mean, what do we have as a planning commission? How do we, in a planning team, how do we help with this situation? What's the next step? I would like to know that, because we're continuing to build up this direction, and there's not a fix for the road situation that's coming. These developments are screaming for help, and we can't do anything to help.
Well, we had that issue again with the last one, with the, you know, on Chapel Road, and that intersection down there. And there didn't seem to be a clear solution to that.
Because it's not in our hands, correct? It's a county, and it's the state, correct? This is the 40, 155?
It's the cities in some cases, too. But again, that's, it's for us to verify that there's adequate public facilities.
Yeah. Okay.
And so, no, there is a, I think there's a burden on us.
Clarification. It's not up for us to verify adequate public facilities. It is presented to us whether it's adequate public facilities or not.
Yeah, exactly.
We just take the information under oath that's given to us.
You're correct, Harry. It's up to us to approve
Okay.
the application
Yes, sir.
based on whether there's adequate public facilities or not.
Okay, yes.
I just wanted to add, I'm not trying to influence the discussion, I just wanted to add a few legal points on the concern over adequate public facilities or constitutional law requirements that kick in that also need to be considered when the city develops these ordinances. And that includes whether there is a proportionate burden being placed on that property. So that's why the traffic impact studies become important, so that there can be an allocation based on the percentage impact that that particular grouping of projects is having on that particular road or system. So we have to look at the proportionality of that impact. So if there needed to be improvements, say at Grace Manor, aside from it being beyond a quarter mile away, which creates a problem of us imposing any burden, but assuming we could, we would have to look at, well, they couldn't be responsible for 100%, because it's not 100% of their people going through there. So who else would have to kick in? And that particular intersection then gets into second point. There were other jurisdictional elements, county, state, and potentially federal, if you're near 95, that would have to have input into that situation. So it makes the roads situation a little more difficult to allocate. But that is, that is kind of an overlay onto what the current adequate public facilities says. And then the city council can always update the city code and make it have a little more teeth. They haven't gotten to that yet, but that's another potential option.
So the onus is on them at this point? Okay.
But I just wanted to add that. And then in terms of, I think I have one other thought, but it kind of went away. But that, but that, I just wanted to point out, there are other overlays, other than the city code, that would impact some of the decision-making on whether APFO, it's much easier for water sewer, because now that we have the district set up, we can, we can pinpoint the different jurisdiction that might be impacting that particular water sewer district.
Thanks for the clarification.
Just want to point out one other thing, too. I mean, if these studies are two years old, keep in mind that it's likely to be two years before those houses come online as well. So.
So, and I know Jeff was going to say something. I'm interested to hear what he has to say, but he did say that when we get a subdivision plan, it is sent to the school board, and the school board reviews it with the most current information that's available, which is the enrollment from fall of 2024, okay? And then they apply a formula, like he says, based on the type of housing, they can project the yield of students based upon data from all across the state, right? And, and then they, they give an opinion, and they show what the projections look like, and we can only project so far. But then what happens is, is, you know, the economy could have a downturn, and they don't build. So we can't hold up number two, because number one didn't build. And then we got some things that we've had here in Havre to Grace, too, where they have this subdivision plan that might have 300 houses, and they build 100. Then the economy goes bad, and they stop. They don't build the other 200. So we can't predict how that's going to be. Or we can be given a job, for instance, like one on Route 40, where they didn't tell us it was a phased product, project, and they build the easiest phase whatsoever, not the one that kicked in all the, not the one that kicked in all the retail and stuff like that. They just, all of a sudden, we ain't doing that one no more. We got, you know, so.
So we have to just base it on what's right in front of us at the time?
It's, it's at this particular point in time. And I, you know, as much as I don't like certain things, I do agree with our commission here. You have to build it, because the state will not fund students that are not there. And the funding for the schools comes per student.
Got it. Thank you. Did you want to say something, Jeff? Sorry.
No problem. I was just going to comment on the legacy, is what you had some concerns about, being a two-year-old analysis from the school. Even though the letter was two years old, staff, we did review the proposal against the current projections from Harford County. And in the staff report, that analysis, the calculation was from the most current school report. So just to ease your mind on that a little bit.
It's helpful. Thank you.
Okay. This has been a very good and lively discussion, and I hope it's helped us
Helped me.
understand this process a little more, if it can be understood. Did, are you wanting to add anything?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. On page two, Jeff, letter E, did your jurisdiction identify or implement recommendations related to the following general planning topics to improve the local planning and/or development process? And that's checked no. But in the past year, we, we had at least studied, I mean, we've been studying sewer and water capacity. Under revitalization and infill, we had that big study of the hospital site. There's ongoing bike and pedestrian planning activities that are going on. So I'm wondering why we wouldn't include those as, as things we're at least working on.
Would you refer us again to that?
Yep. It's page two.
Yeah.
And it's under amendments and growth-related change in, changes in development patterns. And it's letter E.
Letter E, okay.
So, yeah, so there are, there are other planning initiatives that are going on. And related to water and sewer, and revitalization and infill, and bike and pedestrian planning. So, but none of those are checked, so.
Yeah, I think the key there is implementation. And obviously, I wasn't
Identified and/or implement.
Obviously, I wasn't here last year, so I can't speak specifically to these items. But discussing with staff, they didn't think that we had really implemented any of these items. But if the planning commission feels differently, you know, we can definitely amend the report if you'd like.
Okay. I mean, it's work that's been, that we all, some of that we all worked on. And so it might be worth mentioning. And then I really, I didn't understand page four. It's total units approved on an existing lot, 167. Gross acres of existing lot, 17.27. What is, do you know what projects that might refer to?
Yes, those are mainly, of course, Bully Rock, as well as Greenway Farms. The bulk of those permits were those two developments.
Okay. And then, and then there's total residential units constructed, 64, which is actually lower. There was another section where you had building permits, and it was like 164 something. So the COs were much below the building permits? Is that?
So of course, there's those that get approved, right? And then there's those that get finalized with a CO.
Right.
That means they're actually occupiable.
Right.
So obviously, there's a timing to construction. But in terms of the ones that actually got COs last year, it was 64.
Yeah, but that's a big lag. Like, I think in 2023, there was, you know, well over, you know, 150-some building permits. And somehow, and then another 160-some last year, but we somehow end up with only 64 certificates of occupancy. So that seemed a little bit odd. Something's really lagging there, then. People aren't building after they get permits. And total number of commercial site plans approved, did you have that in there? That would, that would be the Clark Road, I think, maybe?
That was Wawa.
Wawa?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Those are my only questions.
Yeah, I can double-check the CO number with staff, see if that's accurate.
Anybody else? So you're going to, you're going to go back and just make sure that that particular item is
Yes, we'll double-check, make sure the number's correct.
And if you would let me know one way or the other, if this is going to stand, or if you need to make that change.
Sure.
So what I would like to do, taking that into account, I would seek the approval of the planning commission for me to sign this letter, and make sure that that one item got checked, and then ship it off to the state of Maryland.
And I will say, there was a rush of permits at the end of the year, because the county was raising their fees. So I wonder if that may be the reason why. I think it was pretty heavy in November, December applications. But I will double-check that to make sure it's correct.
So do I have a motion that we approve this report to go to the state?
I motion that we approve this report with the final acknowledgement from Jeff Tuvolny about the one thing that may or may not be changed. Otherwise, I, I motion that we accept this.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? All right. I'll call the roll. Mr. Girono?
Yes.
Mr. Place?
Yes.
Mr. Chan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Carrie's five to zero. Thank you. And I'll, I don't know which letter copy you want me to sign, but I'll be glad to sign it tonight before I leave. If you have a prettier one than this, or you want me just to sign this one?
Unless you have an issue with it. Unless you have an issue with this format, you can sign that one.
Okay. I don't have an issue with the format. Okay. But I do want to see, before, I shouldn't sign it tonight, because I want to see that one modification that you may make, just to
I'll definitely check tomorrow. I'll check tomorrow morning.
I'll pop in tomorrow after and take a look at that.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. The next item on the agenda, item B on new business, is to approve the minutes of the May 15 planning commission meeting. This is kind of a new wrinkle for us also, because we haven't had such beautiful formal minutes in writing, prepared by the staff. And I think that these are among the most thorough, thoroughly-written minutes that I've seen in a long time. Now, I guess we'll find out in a few minutes if they're accurate to your satisfaction. But it's a beautiful job of minutes preparation.
I'm the secretary on another board, and I have to tell you, I was really impressed.
I'm sorry?
I was, I'm the secretary on another board. I was very impressed. Much, much better than mine ever have been.
Darn thing. Okay, so do you all have copies of these in front of you? Did you bring them?
Yep.
Okay, this is the May 15 meeting. And I'm just simply asking if anybody has any additions or corrections to these minutes.
Well, I have a, I have a basic question. As you say, Mr. Chairman, this is a new process for us. And, which again, should be in the, in the rules. And I'm not opposed to having minutes, but these are hard, these are not really a complete reflection of the record of the hearings by any stretch of the imagination. And so I'm wondering, are we, we still relying on the video recordings, and those are additionally part of the record?
Yes. We used to have minutes
Yeah.
written minutes before we had video, before we had audio
Right.
that, and the only way we could track the meetings were through minutes. And what we would do is have a tape recorder sitting out there, and it would record the voices. And the minutes were, were constructed from that, if you will. And the minutes, because of that, and because you didn't know exactly who was talking and who was saying what, all you really knew was the issue before us and the vote, and just a general mention in the minutes of, of the tone of the meeting.
Right.
It wasn't detailed at all. Nowadays, with, with this and with the video and audio, between the three of these, we have quite an accurate record and of what went on in that planning commission meeting, if we have to refer back to it. Or I would hope this doesn't happen, but if it ended up in a trial somewhere, you know, if it went to court, and they had to reconstruct exactly what went on in the meeting.
Right.
We are far better between these minutes and the audio and video, we, and, and the very terrible acoustics in this room. I think we're hitting as best as we can possibly hit. And the thing I'm asking for is to make sure that there's just nothing that's incorrect in these minutes, the way they're prepared.
Okay.
Are there any glaring errors in these minutes? At this point, I'm really not that interested in whether, how thorough they are. I'm more interested in
No, I just wanted to clarify that point, because that's an important point.
But all three are part of the record.
All right. That's, that's good.
If I could just clarify, it wasn't the intent to do a transcript. It was mainly just to summarize the items that were discussed, and make sure that we're documenting, that we're following the correct procedures. Motions are made, votes are taken, things of that nature. So, and as you mentioned
Yeah.
the YouTube video is obviously the best record that we have for that, so.
Well, this, it's, it's really hard if you're trying to recall something
Yeah.
to sit there and watch a video of the entire meeting, just to find out some little piece of information. Whereas this summarized written minutes make it a lot easier for us to go back and quickly see what happened in the meeting if we need to, for our own purposes. And then if we have to dig in deep, then we drag out the video.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's important clarification.
Yeah, yeah.
I can spend a lot less time on this than understanding that
Yeah.
the videotape is the, the The videotape is the, the more complete record of the meeting. Okay.
This is, this is better than the congressional record. You guys did a really good job. Now, I'll, I'll ask if, if there are any additions or corrections to the May 15 meeting minutes. One thing I want to mention, this has nothing to do with additions or corrections, but it refers directly to the minutes now that we're getting minutes. What, I, I would just suggest that we use the correct terminology when we're talking about motions and seconds. The correct terminology, as I recall, is that you, so-and-so moves to, to do something. We really don't make a motion, we move. You know, I move that we do this and then somebody else comes along and says, I second. And it's okay to say, I second that motion. But when you say you want to make a motion, you should always say, I move that we do this or that. And, and, and then when we write the minutes, I'm reading right here, like, for instance, at the bottom of the first page, it should read, Commissioner Place moved to table this item.
Mm-hmm.
You know, instead of motioned.
Right.
You know, that's kind of incorrect English. I don't want to be picky, but I mean, that's, makes it look a lot more professional and so forth and so on. So now, let's go back. Any additions or corrections to these minutes as prepared?
Yeah, the only other thing I'd mention is, and this, at city council, they, they identified the public speakers who spoke. And I don't know if we want to do that in this situation. But it, you know, it leaves it pretty anonymous and not even the, the number of speakers. So it might be worth including, just identifying.
Well, they do, they are. It's requested that they introduce themselves and give their address. And so that's a part of the audio record. Now, the question is, should, should we go to the extent of trying to accurately put that in this record? Because if we're going to do that, we, then we got to understand the spelling of their name and, and everything, you know? We got to get it right. And city council has people fill out a form. So they've got that, in their own handwriting, they've got their name written down and their address, which they can connect to the proceeding. I was hoping that we wouldn't have to go through the process of having people fill out request forms to speak and all that kind of stuff. It just really slows down the process.
Well, they don't always fill out a form. They don't always fill out a form and they don't always speak clearly enough that it can be accurately reflected in the record either, I don't think.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to add, under Robert's rules, detailed minutes are not required. Just the attendance, the motion made, who voted, who seconded, who voted on the motion, and the basic topic of discussion is really all that's legally, technically required. So any additional detail would be up to the planning commission.
Okay. All right. Note again, are we satisfied with the contents? Any additions or corrections? Hearing none now. I call for a motion that we approve the minutes to the May 15 meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes to the May 15 meeting.
A second?
I second.
Any discussion? I'll call the roll. We'll start with Mr. Place.
Yes.
Ms. Chan?
Yes.
Mr. Girono?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. You notice that I try to change the order so you guys don't influence each other unduly with your votes. I try to stir up the order. Okay, now we move to, and, and the minutes are approved. Now we move to the meeting of May 29. And I will ask if there are any additions or corrections to this set of minutes. Is anything inaccurate?
Yeah, since we were, since this especially focuses on action items, I just wanted to point out that I believe I made a motion to table this application pending a revised public notice is published. And I don't know that I got a second on that, but I did make that motion.
Where is it?
At, at Harry's suggestion, by the way.
Where does that fall in these minutes?
I think that was, uh.
Wasn't in there.
I mean, where would it, where should it fall?
It was where, you know.
Because who, Jeff, who, who actually transcribed it?
It was the first question I asked Jeff regarding, you know, my long list of questions to Jeff. And I brought it up again. I had brought it up with Lamson, but I didn't make a formal motion regarding it. But I did make it regarding the legacies, that, you know, we really shouldn't be hearing this because I felt the public notice was inadequate. So I did make that motion. So, you know, it would be on the first page.
Can you, can you pick a place that you would like to see it?
You, you could be after Mr. Goins responded to questions from planning commissioners, you know.
Now, let me ask Jeff. These minutes were transcribed directly from the video. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And who did that job?
I did.
You did it yourself?
Yes.
So you're the guy that wrote all these things?
Yes.
Beautiful. Now.
It was a long video, so I'm.
I know.
I'm sure I missed something.
But, but would you, is this something that you could have missed? Or is this something that you think was not in the record?
I definitely could have missed it, yes. It was, I definitely could have missed it. It was a very long video. So if, if you feel you have any corrections, please provide them.
Okay. Well, that's one.
Now, is it, do you feel that it's critical to get these, get that into these minutes?
Yes.
Okay, even though.
An action item before the commission, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think it's important. Some, if a commissioner makes a motion, it should be reflected in the minutes.
Okay. Then to, let's see, how do we best handle this? Because we can't sit here all night while we look at the video again. I think the only way to properly handle this, since there's a, an objection to that particular item, is that we table this set of minutes to the next meeting and we fix that.
Yeah. I agree.
All right. Because I agree, it needs to be in the record.
Okay.
All right. So I'm not going to ask for a vote on these minutes tonight. We'll table, I need a motion to table?
I motion to table the minutes from May 29 until the next meeting, until the reference is included, that Mr. Chip Place had a motion that wasn't included.
Now, Jeff, do you understand precisely the part that he's talking about?
So you believe there was a motion to table somewhere after my responses to your question?
Right. Well, it was in the middle of your responses to, to my question.
Okay. And if, once you find it and fix it, could you send it out to all of us so that he can see and we, we can see to our satisfaction that that's in there?
The video itself?
No, when you fix the minutes.
Oh, sure.
We don't need the video. We just need, you know, to find that missing piece of the minutes and get it in there.
Well, yeah, so then I'll recirculate the revised minutes. I'll recirculate the revised minutes then, once I've made the changes, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table discussion. I'll call the roll. Mr. Girono?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chan?
Yes.
Mr. Place?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Okay.
Not sure who seconded that.
I did.
She did.
You moved.
I moved it? So who seconded it?
I didn't get a second?
I don't think so.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Good catch.
Everybody agreeable to stay with the vote?
Yes.
After, after the missing second. I apologize. All right.
Any other changes I should be looking for? Any other revisions or changes or?
No, nobody had mentioned anything else.
That's the only, okay.
Yeah.
I have to tell you, Jeff, I really appreciate this. As somebody who goes back and reads my minutes from my other meetings that I have, I go through them a lot. And it's nice to have a synopsis of what was talked about during the meeting. Not all the details and the conversations, but the synopsis of what was discussed. So when we go back to review the minutes each month, we can hit on it very quickly. And I just, I'm going to love getting these so I can put them in my file and go back and look at them. It's a lot easier than watching two hours of video.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, we've gone through all the business and you've got laying right beside you here this huge piece of work for the next meeting, the Sheets project. Everybody's got a copy of that package. And I'll need to get copies to the missing commissioners. Here they are. Shall I just take them and, and get them to them between now and the next meeting?
That'd be great, if you can.
Yeah, I'll take care of that. Hand both of those over here.
I have a question.
I can provide Ms. Jones her copy on Monday night.
Are we allowed as commission members to go to this site and walk through it? Because I know there was a, an issue with doing that at one of our other meetings.
The city code does allow you to. I think best practice would be to contact the owner, if you can, to get their permission. And I don't think it's required, but I think a good practice would be to do that, just so then.
I believe the state law provides that we can enter onto properties.
Take measurements.
Without trespass.
Okay.
But it, the polite thing to do is to let somebody know you're doing it.
Right.
Unless, in a property like this, you probably can see everything you need to see from the street.
Right, right.
You know, because it's a, it's, it's got a street that runs along the side of it and, and of course, Pulaski Highway. So it's a really easy project just to stand there and look at.
It's the old bank site, is that correct? It's the old bank site?
Yeah, but doesn't this, I haven't opened this up. Does this not also include all those self-storage buildings?
It does not. It's just the bank site.
And it's unoccupied, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So it's a vac, basically vacant.
Because I always envisioned Sheets operations as being humongous.
Me, too.
But.
But I think April wanted to say something.
Yes, ma'am.
I would also suggest, it's not required, but it would be a good idea if you could coordinate a visit so we don't have multiple people going on different days to the same property. That's typically how other commissions have done it. And it seems to be a more efficient way to accomplish it. The goal would be, though, not to talk business while you're there, but to observe and, and take in the site and make notes. If there's a quorum and you're talking business, then you want to file the Open Meetings Act. So there is an exception under the Open Meetings Act that you can go in on more, you know, a quorum can attend as long as you're not talking business, so.
Thank you. Okay. I think we've covered everything. Would, is there anything anybody else would like to say? Right? Then do I have a motion that we adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second?
I second.
All in favor, raise your hand.